I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I go for this March 3 meeting, Commissioners, I'll show you all three Commissioners present, the county auditor here. And so we'll start out with the opening of the bids. John?
Morning.
John?
We've got three, it looks like. I'll start with one on top here, which is E and B. Just for the record, E and B, the community crossings, 25-1, and I recommend that we take them under advisement until we are awarded for MINDA.
You just bid them so you're ready to go whenever they award you them.
Yes, contingent.
They'll move right on.
Bid them contingent on the reward. So the first one here from E and B, Project 1, 250 South from Kiwanah Town Limits to County Line Road, $376,404.35. Big Hills Road, 550 South from County Line Road to State Road 17, $470,287.20. Project 3, 950 South from 900 West to State Road 17, $319,480.40. Total bid, $1,166,171.95. The second one here is from Bennett Brown. Project 1, 250 South from Kiwanah Town Limits to County Line Road, $391,131.35.
Did you say that again, please, John?
Project 2, Big Hills Road, 550 South from County Line Road to State Road 17, $482,279.20. Project 3, 950 South from 900 West to State Road 17, $331,940.40. Having a total bid of $1,205,350.95.
Did you do that third one again, John, sorry?
The third project?
Yes, Chris.
The final bid is from Central Paving. Boyad Seal. Project 1, 250 South from Kiwanah Town Limits to County Line Road, $388,318.35. Project 2, Big Hills Road, 550 South from County Line to State Road 17, $476,903.70. And Project 3, 950 South from 900 West to State Road 17, $322,341.90. Given a total bid, $1,187,563.95.
Those are things E and B have located on those budgets.
I read them, but I don't know what they said.
Yep. About $20,000 under the second bid on total and almost $40,000 on the top bid.
Take them under advisement.
Yeah, is that what we're gonna do, then you'll look them over and then when they award them, you'll know who exactly go went through all the process, come work here.
Yeah, and I think that they might announce the awards this week is kind of what I'm hearing, so you should know your state awards and then probably at your subsequent meeting, you can award it officially.
Okay.
Good. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay. For C Health.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy, nice to meet you. So, you know, we just happened to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to. So, one of the reports you received previously would have been birthday, so I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the calendar year, okay, for 2024. Always like to highlight that Fulton County was well represented on our Board of Directors. I have a board member with me today, Jason C., who works for Woodlawn Hospital System. He is the Chaplain and Director of Patient Experience and Community Relations. He has spent a decade or more on the For C Board. In addition, most of you know Gloria Calhoun. We are 50 years old this year. Gloria has spent 30 years with For C, so she is a mental health advocate to nobody's equal, as far as I'm concerned. Keith Cole, who you've met before, and then also Chris Saylor, former sheriff, is also on the For C Board. All right. So, since I was last here, I think when I was here, I mentioned that we were gonna be starting primary care services. We did start that in October of 2024. So, we have a nurse practitioner and a physician overseeing that nurse practitioner in our office here in Rochester. It's been a slow build, but what's been nice is we're seeing a lot of the adults who also are diagnosed with pretty serious mental illness being connected for care if they're not following up with their provider in the community. So, services can be started at any time, but somebody could walk into the For C building and start primary care services on Tuesdays and Thursdays at any time now. So, we continue to plan to build and we are pursuing designation as a federally qualified health center, look-alike for Rochester. In addition to that, we have been certified by the State of Indiana, or designated, I should say, as a certified community behavioral health center. Pretty proud of this. This is an entirely new way of approaching behavioral health in many ways. And so, the state chose eight centers that had the capacity, ability, and showed a crisis continuum that was ready for this designation. And so, we are one of only eight centers. There are 24 in the State of Indiana, one of eight designated as a certified community behavioral health center. What does it do? One, it changes the way that we get paid in order to assure that we can build for our communities, number one. Number two, it also now, community mental health centers, I like to say, if you go to one, you go to one, because there's no standard quality metrics that we all have to participate in. So, what this does is it sets a base for the expected quality metrics that we have to participate in. So, next year, when I come here, I'm gonna be able to talk to you about where we're at with that. We do different from every other of the A pilot sites. We post our metrics on our website, on our Care Outcomes page, so today, anybody can go and see where we're at in the journey of meeting these expectations that the state and also, it's also a federal designation, have set for us. I'm really excited about coming back in the future and talking about those quality metrics. An additional piece is the expectation that we radically, and again, along with the support we have from the state, transform our access system. So, we've been working at that over the last six to eight months. Happy to say that today, you can walk into For C Health Monday through Thursday between 8:00 and 3:00 PM and start your services, get an intake. So, before, if you remember, like, if you want to get an appointment, you call. You gotta schedule out weeks, and it takes more weeks, right? You know what I mean? And we had a backlog because we didn't even have that many staff. We've been working at building capacity. So, today, anytime between 8:00 and 3:00, if somebody wants to start their mental health or substance use services, they don't have to call for an appointment. They literally just walk into our building, we'll do the intake, and we'll get them started. So, really, we're able to now, because some people do still like to schedule, right? They'll say, "No, no, 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 I still just like, that's where my preference is." So, so many schedules, they're able to get in in less than eight days, but we're able to create same-day access for the person who's just ready to come in, get services started. And our goal is that, to assure that after that appointment, this is a part of those quality metrics, that we're able to get them in for that second appointment within about a week, a little bit over, okay, of that. Another thing that has been a change is that we did officially move our inpatient unit in psychiatric urgent care from Locust Port to Peru. So, you know, we do see folks in our inpatient unit from Fulton County. Specifically, we had 34 residents receive inpatient psychiatric unit services that block secured need for mental health services in the calendar year. That accounts for 172 bed days. We are seeing our bed days decrease because we have more crisis services. So, I think you know, since 2020, we've been doing 24/7, 365 global crisis services. Here in Fulton County, since September of 2020, we have deployed for our, what we'll call our behavioral health first responders, we have responded to 1,020 deployments here in Fulton County. And in calendar year 24, that is 244 times our teams were called out. Now, how does that happen? Usually, it's law enforcement letting us know that, in fact, we need to get out there, beat them, and like, yeah, co-responder situation. Sometimes they're deployed from other means, and now, we're getting some calls from the 988 system. So, if somebody calls 988 today and they are in crisis and they can't resolve that call on the phone, they may, when they know it's a Fulton County resident, call us to deploy to wherever that resident is. The really great thing about mobile is we're still achieving about a 65% stabilization rate. So, that means that most people don't go anywhere but stay in their home. We're able to get them where they need to be, stabilize the situation, and they're not having to go to institutional care. In between that, we do have our psychiatric urgent care. We're really hoping to expand this over time so that it's not, we can maybe ideally place it in every county. But today, it exists in Peru, and that psychiatric urgent care goes 24/7, 365. So, think of fast-paced health down the road here in Rochester. Well, that essentially is what we have for psychiatric and substance use disorders, but it's open 24/7, 365. So, if somebody voluntarily has a family member, a friend, whatever, that needs services and they're in crisis, then they can literally go to that location and get services. Let's see where I'm at here. All right. So, in the calendar year 24, we provided 30,694 services here in Fulton County or for Fulton County residents. 864 residents serve. We always have a few more people that we serve that come from around the area into our office, but 864 of services, the people we provide services to in this office were Fulton County residents. About 70% of those we serve here in Fulton County are on Medicaid and HIPAA insurance. The rest is made up of Medicare, commercial insurance, and self-pay. 52% of people who come for services in Fulton County are self-referred. That's pretty consistent across all counties. Most people reach directly out for services at For C. 22% of referrals come from schools, and then the remainder come from healthcare, criminal justice, DCS. We had 450 new, I'm sorry, admissions this year for services here in Fulton County. 45% of those are new admissions. You're probably, by the time I stop coming to these eventually, a long time from now, you'll remember this one thing. I always point out admissions, because what you want to see in behavioral health is you want to see that people who are coming in for care for the first time, okay, when they need help, and that's 45% of those, 450 admissions. But you also want to see people returning for care when they need to, and that's because mental health and substance use disorders are typically not wanted. Once you've had an experience with one, it's possible, just like migraines, for those to come back up. And the majority of people, only 41% of individuals who actively seek out mental health treatment actually achieve remission the first time around. It oftentimes takes a couple of treatment episodes to get to the place where they need to be. Services provided in the county. We are embedded within every school system in Fulton County. We do home-based services. We have assertive community treatment in this area, and that is really that, every day of the week, care out in the community for people diagnosed with schizophrenia, produce severe bipolar disorder. We have peer services in the county, and then obviously in our clinic, we have outpatient therapy services, addiction services, psychiatric medication clinic services, now primary care, and I've mentioned mobile. Three other things I'll simply mention is we do participate and appreciate the ability to do so in the Fulton County Treatment Courts. We also provide free services to the jail. That's something that we have been doing for a bit. Two days a week, totally seven groups per week. And we also offer free, we're hoping to ramp this up in Fulton County. In fact, there's an upcoming meeting that we have some folks attending to do that. But we offer free mental health first aid, E and QPR, which is a suicide prevention training to community members, to really help them understand more how to respond to people in the moment. And so far, with those three trainings, we have reached 161 community members. Like to see that number double, because I think the need is there. So, that is everything that I wrote down to tell you today without putting you to sleep. Any questions that you might have for me?
Sounds like you're serving a lot of people.
Well, we're trying to. I really like here in Fulton County to see that number go over 1,000. So, each time, it goes up just a little bit. And our goal across all of the seven counties now that we're a certified community behavioral health center is to reach 10,000 unique lives annually. So, really, the need is there, and I think for us, as we look in every county, the goal is to more intentionally and substantially reach those individuals, not just experiencing mental health, but also substance use disorder. And I do believe we can get to over 1,000 people served at Fulton County, but now I've stated that goal out loud, so I can't come back here without it.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay. Got somebody here from Marshall Street Development? Didn't hear you say that. Good thinking. Something out there, didn't know. Okay. Department updates. We'll go back, let's start back there with John. Since you've been up there, you got things started. All right, we'll get you back up there.
I think I get to go home early. What'd he say? I can't hear him. Anybody hear what he said?
I better leave it. Got two permit requests for you. The first one is request 25-3, and it's from BSM Groups on behalf of Comcast, and they're asking to install a two-inch duct 48 inches below the roadway, bidirectional bore at 2770 North Old US 31.
You okay with that one?
Yeah.
Bore, so we don't have to worry about anything else on top?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Motion carries.
The second one I sent you later on in the week, permit 25-4, it's from Terricon Consultants, and they're asking to do some geotechnical exploration for the structure at 400 South over West Street. And that's a bridge that we're doing, and that'd be with the USI there, if we're able to replace that bridge.
Get some things out of the way or gonna?
Well, we do.
Help stuff around? Okay?
That's one ID.
Huh?
That's one ID.
That's right. Okay. You guys have any questions?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made. Seconded. All in favor? Motion carries.
Bringing up to date on the guys, they've been patching holes, running the brush cutter. They're still, they're wrapping up work with RMC, probably the next day or two, when you've done cutting trees with them. They've taken down a lot of that rotten trees along the road, so.
I saw some down my way, haven't been blocked off that road closure for a while.
Yeah. It sure saves going out 2:00 on a Saturday night, you know, where somebody running into it. We have been crushing mellings there at Rochester. We got the ones at Kiwanah all crushed out, and they're working on those. I do want to go back to permits. Wolfbeige Power, they're gonna be working today up here on Old 31 North, flagging traffic, they're picking up their mats and stuff, so they asked me to announce that, take you guys today. We had a pre-con meeting last week for Bridge 161 down at the library. Went pretty good, pretty straightforward. I believe they're gonna start around, they won't start till after June 1st, so let farmers get in and get their crops planted around it. That's gonna cut off quite a bit of area. But, you know, everything went pretty good. The port construction has that. We'll need it. I did talk to a couple of you, I didn't have a chance to talk to Brian. Bridge 170, NDOT's Enos Lutter, it's a federally project that we submitted for. They're asking for us to try to do more on our match. I was thinking about five or 10% more maybe on our construction engineering, is what we can afford. Be about $25,000 to $50,000 out of our pocket.
Are you able to figure that out?
I could do five. I mean, I don't want to do any of it, but if I can have you guys' blessing, I can do forward with that, or if you want me to leave it as it is, or application as it is, I can do that.
I usually just leave it up to you, whatever you stand, but I don't like to pay anymore. I don't know that it gained you a whole lot, so, but it might, it's up to you.
Suppose it'll give you the same favor, or they'll knock us out if we don't?
Don't know.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess my thing would be, do you think it's gonna benefit you enough to pay the extra, you got an extra match? Kind of me.
Gonna find out they hit five or 10% this time, and then the next one will be the last 10% or 20%.
That's what I don't like, I don't want that every time. Like I said, you know them better than I do.
Hey, Ben, have you ever seen this, where that could benefit, like, add to the match?
Never can hurt, but, yeah, I mean, you just don't know.
We did do that on Old 31 North on the second try. It didn't help. We still got rejected.
I don't know what the other two think that might be.
I agree. Yeah, I'll go along there, yeah. Get by with that.
We gotta know by the 14th, and I'll evaluate it further.
Okay.
Try to make a decision, but I think that's what I'm thinking, like, 5%.
So, is that necessary for that much?
Yeah.
Because our budget's already thin, and I know we're talking now about SB 1, how they're looking, the state's looking to cut our budgets severely. We don't need draining the coffers anymore, we have to.
Sold bid, it does, I've got that out for us to put in our needs for next year. I was thinking around 600 tons. We're starting to get our salt used up out there.
What is their bid price this year?
Well, you put it in your mouth, and then they come back in June and tell you what the price would be, so it works kinda, it's kinda hard to do, but I think it was around 76 or something. Give or take a little.
Do you use quite a bit up this year so far?
Yeah, we haven't, actually, I only ordered 300 ton for this winter, and we haven't even received it yet, because we've been using it the last two years, because we didn't use very much. But I don't want to empty us out, I'd like to keep us a year and a half to two years stockpiled.
Yep. Never know, we're gonna get one of those blast winters.
Right. So, I've seen it before where you couldn't get sold. If, I can have your blessing on that order, around 600 ton.
I'm good with it, how about you guys?
And that's all I have for you today.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Hey, Kerry, you go ahead? Good morning.
What we got first is Finishing Touch Cleaning Services, it does for the three buildings here, her contracts up on March 11th. We got a new contract I'd like to carry on with her, that's for another year, and I wanted to present that. Nothing's changed on it except for the dates. She's been in the same bid price as what it was.
What is the dollar amount?
I don't remember, I don't have.
Probably ninety?
Probably right off the top of my head. Ninety-four thousand, 200 per year.
I know, I've heard a lot of good things from this last year, what she's done.
Yeah, I haven't had any complaints. She's basically done it by herself pretty much. She had, first she had another, her sister helping her, and she went by herself, and she's been doing pretty good. So, anything that she's asked me to take care of, took care of for Brown's. I'd like to renew that if I can.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for $94,200.
Okay, second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the contract with Finishing Touch Cleaning Services for $94,200. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Along with, I got the new bidding machine coming in. Talked to Travis, Chad, and John. We're also gonna change the machines out of their areas to be all three buildings probation asked for machines in their offices also, mainly for water machines, because they do a lot of drug testing, and they ask for water, so. So, those will come in March 10th. The old bidding machine company, I asked them to try to be out before that, so they came and got all their machines and emptied everything out. The only thing they didn't take was the pot machines yet. They said they were giving them back to Coke and Pepsi, so I'm waiting on them to come and get the rest of the machines out. The new chiller is installed at the courthouse. As soon as it warms up here, which is coming in about 10 days, it looks like we're gonna hit like a 65, 70 degree, they're gonna come back and try to do the final touches on it, why it's warm, and try to set everything. We still have the backup chiller to keep this going, so no worries on that. And I think I talked to you guys once about some septic smells that were going on in the probation office and the courthouse that were really bad. We got it fixed at probation. It was a broken pipe down in the basement. It was backed up, it was kinda hidden spot. Court helped me out, we got that fixed. The other one was at the courthouse, which I talked to you guys a little bit about too. I guess that one's been going on for several years, maybe like over 20. I guess it happened in a remodeled part of the security room in the old VA office. There was either a bathroom or fountain or something was took out, and the vent pipe was just cut off and left in the wall. So, it was bending throughout the wall and then seeping up into the ceiling, and then it would, just as soon as the cold air would return, it would take it all the way through the courthouse. And I've been fighting that for about three months. We smoke tested eight times until we finally found it in the wall, and so now I'm down to fixing the wall, because we cut into the wall pretty hard. So, I'm repairing that in the security office right now. But the smell's gone, so.
Great. I'm sure everybody over there's appreciative.
They're very appreciative, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry. Okay. Brittany?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, just a couple things. The console's moved, so we are ADA compliant, so that's really nice. This week I meet with Emergency Police Dispatch, which is priority dispatch, because that's the project we're in right now first. This week is more like an administrative training, but then I'll also be trained at the same time as a full operator of the police dispatching. I'm just one less person to do that. This week is more like an administrative training, but then I'll also be trained at the same time as a full operator of the police dispatching. So one less person to do that. We had some vouchers that were purchased at the time of the buy, so I'll just be using one of those. That's already paid for. Right now I'm working pretty aggressively on preparing what I would call to-go kits, especially since we approach the severe weather season. We have a tote that I intend to grab if we need to evacuate quickly, which is going to include binders with all emergency information in it, phone numbers, school information. I've been working to do the binders for what stay-in dispatcher, one-to-go in this to-go kit also, so they just have to grab and go. I signed, one of my dispatchers and I up for the professional conference. It's kind of like a modern-day NINA conference, which is a nine-one-one conference. They usually offer, or they will offer a lot of great classes that we can break back to the center. So we're doing a lot of training this year. I'm trying to take a different dispatcher to all the things that we're going to. That way they're able to experience some of the things. So I have almost all of them signed up or something. Some of the classes are covered by the state of Indiana, some are not. Really what's hurting us the most is just the the overnight, the hotels and stuff. That's what really gets expensive, but it's in the budget, so we're good to go. I did receive some information from Motorola, which does our radios, the in-two-thirty, the program that we have, which is the Motorola seventy-five hundreds are expiring, which is really bad news for us. I'm currently getting a quote to update all four stations, so obviously I'm not going to be able to do that all at one time. They're very, very expensive for the next that we have to have, so my intention is maybe once a year budget to update one station at a time. So right now, obviously, we have three fully operational consoles. I would like to add a fourth just in case. Perfect examples when the severe weather comes in, obviously they're going to call me in if it gets really bad. I want to be able to fully operate a four. That way if I come in and I'm the four, that I'm able to dispatch from that console also. Right now I'm getting a quote for the four, just to kind of get a rough idea. She did warn me that they're expecting an increase of up to thirty percent, so the quote that she gives me today is not going to be what it is, so my goal is to maybe get that fourth console up next year to start the process. One of the years I might have to do two, but it's going to be a lot of money.
When you say that, and be done by?
So by twenty-thirty. She said in twenty-thirty, they're not going to just completely cut us off, but it's going to be pretty close, so I'm trying to learn more about what this is because it's all, I have no clue, so.
These are all whole new systems?
It's a whole new program.
Will they have to interface with each other in the meantime?
Yeah, so the ones we have are okay right now. I'm not sure, I mean, it's going to be individual to that or specific to that specific console. So there's not going to be any interference or anything like that, but there might be one year that, like I said, I'll have to do two, but I don't, I'm not really looking forward to that, so it's going to be hard to kind of budget for that, especially if they do that increase, and I'm not sure what that's going to look like, so it'll be just like a year to year.
Do we have any idea even what they are right now?
For some reason, in my head, there was a county that was just done. They put in three. It's about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand per console.
Per console?
Per one console. So it's, it's not going to be really pretty. So that's bad news, but the good news is hopefully, once we get them all operational up to where they should be, we have till twenty-thirty. I just want to.
Then we'll keep looking around. Maybe we got, we can get some help on some of them.
Yeah.
Sometimes they offer grants.
Well, I asked about some grants, and the Gallup Motorola told me that they've, they've frozen all of grants right now for stuff like that, so I need to obtain more information and understand that more. ERS does service these, so I'm sure we could look around and see if there's different services they use, but we've used ERS for years. So I'd like to continue to do that just because we're familiar with them. They've been accommodating, but I'm not against asking more questions. I actually need them at ERS, I believe, next week to just, to get more information about what's to be expected, so. I'm super agreeing with these, so just learning with each day to understand what it means. And that is all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Got questions? All right. Brad, did you have anything?
Just a real quick update. We are less than four months from going live with our new EHR epic, so the hospital's kind of a madhouse right now because we're using the old system and learning the new system at the same time. I really just want everybody to know that as you come in here over the next month or two, you're going to start seeing signs. When this changeover happens, it's going to be like we don't know you, so we're going to have to get all new health information records, you know, your new insurance cards. We're going to have to do IDs. This system has the capacity to take a photograph of you, if you would like, and put it in your system. Some people, that bothers them, but in general, it's a really nice way to make sure that we're giving the right medicine to the right person at the right time. So what that means would be that up on the floor, when you're getting seen, if you happen to be in inpatient or in ER, they'll see your face on the screen to know that you're the right person that they're giving medicines to, so. When June hits, just be patient. It's going to be like, literally, we don't know you. We're going to have to start all over. The registration's going to be from scratch. So we're going to want to make sure we take our time and get that done. There's going to be a delay in getting in for like doctors' visits, just plain old doctors' visits, because the front office has to learn how to register you, then the medical assistant has to learn how to go through the paperwork and put you in the system and, and do all of those, you know, those kinds of things, which means the doctor's not going to be able to see thirty or forty a day. They're going to be able to see about fifteen a day, maybe twenty a day for the first few weeks. So we're going to try to leave some spots open for just acutes, like somebody just gets sick that day kind of thing, but it's going to be a little bit harder there for probably about a month or two to get in because we're going to have to slowly build that schedule back up. At the end of the day, I was just talking with the mayor, you'll be able to get your records from anywhere. So you go see a specialist in Indy or California or wherever, we'll be able, your doctor here will be able to just look, and you can say, oh yeah, I was in the hospital in California last week. They can just go in and look, find it, and pull it over. So from an information standpoint, it's going to be so much nicer. And then the only other thing I want to remind everybody of is we started a new program called MD Save, and MD Save is a company that we partnered with, and it allows people who have high deductibles or who have, or self-pay, no insurance or self-pay, to get online and look for lab services and imaging services and get a significant discount. We're talking up to sixty, seventy percent off in lots of cases through Woodlawn. So you can go on, but what it'll do is it'll let you look at every single person, hospital around us, what their cost is for, let's say, MRI. Well, Woodlawn's now on that surface too, and we've, we are more competitive than everyone around us now. So I just want to get that out there because I do know there's people in the community that don't have insurance or they've got those ten thousand dollar deductible health plans, and this is a way for them to save some money.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Travis.
Good morning.
Good morning, Travis.
We had a hundred and eleven inmates this morning when I looked. We were at a conference last week. Spent three days learning how this new immigration and ICE thing's going to work and try to keep from getting sued throughout the process of that, so. There was a news article last week concerning DOC nonpayments for, for holding inmates. I just wanted to clarify a few things on that. The Outta County inmates, the Grant County, the federal inmates, we're under contract on that, and they pay, so that's never an issue. DOC, we hold them by statute. We don't have a choice on who we hold for DOC, and they decide when they're ready to pick them up and when they're ready to take them, and evidently they decide when they're going to pay us too, so. So that's how that works. I just, I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that.
Have they, have they been paid in SaaS?
They have, I think we're paid up through, and I'd have to look. I think through April last year. They owe us about twenty grand for last year. And we're just a small county. You look at it statewide, ninety, ninety-one other counties, and DOC's in our area is about ten million dollars, so. And then they increase it every year, but when they increase their budget for that every year, they're paying back everything from the year before, so they're never getting caught up on that, so. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Sickness, like everywhere else, is running through our office. We're just kind of passing it around, and fortunately we've had guys that step up and want to pick up shifts and things to cover the road, so. We're teaming up with Rochester Police and the Moose on Saturday from noon to two. Out at the Moose here, we're doing fingerprinting and DNA kits for kids. Basically, the parents bring them in here, we'll do the kids and everything. Parents take them home, they keep them, they store them, the event that something would happen or they would need that identification, they would have that readily available then for law enforcement, so. The Moose is sponsoring it. We're just going to go out and assist with them, so. Other than that, I've got nothing unless you guys have questions for me.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Chad, anything? Deb, anything?
Nope.
Nope.
Megan.
Good morning, everybody. So I haven't been here in a while, so I'm excited to be here. So we had our annual meeting February third, and my family and I had struck up for that, so I missed it, but my supervisors did a wonderful job in my absence. At our annual meeting, we had our year review. I think I got you guys those. It's great information on educational programs and outreach that we've done, and we have these at the office. If anybody would like a copy, I think it's more than welcome to stop by and pick it up. I have some here with me. So have how we can serve Fulton County, because a lot of you guys don't know what soil and water conservation districts do. And so we, our services include educational programs, technical assistance, conservation information, native plant and tree sales, plat books and flags, financial assistance for cover crop cost share program. We do a high school river rafting program, teaching them about the history of the tippecanoe river, how to check water quality, oxygen levels, phosphorus. We do watersheds and forestry. That's always fun. That's in September. We're always looking for volunteers. If anybody would like to join us, you're more than welcome. Contact me. Last, we do the Envirethon education program, which is coming up on the twelfth, and that's going to teach high school students about forestry. I don't know everything, but it covers, but it's, it's a really good program. Yeah, forestry, animals, macra and berber rays, stuff like that. They can go to state and national levels on that, so we do that at Camp Buffalo. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. We do that as well. So if you guys are interested in one of these, I have these with us as well. We are doing our pollinator habitat signage. It's going to be going up when it warms up, but we have it in the midst of getting that out, and that is at Rochester Middle School and Columbia Elementary, so that's going to be nice to have it completed. And I have three new board members, so my board's changed a little bit, but we have brought on our newness, Jim Schreiber and Andy Birdbaker, so I don't know if you guys know them, but they are now on my board, so. If you guys have any more questions, let me know. That's about it.
It's exciting to see things back up and running now.
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, that's. What we have for us?
Okay, the park board has just, in the last year or so, updated their five-year master plan. And I have copies if you'd like a hard copy, or it's also on the website. The old school.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Thank you.
That's something we do. The main thing is if we don't want to get a DNR grant, makes us eligible.
Good. Okay.
And also, we have been working on getting updated on our county rules ordinance for the parks. I don't know if you have that today or not.
We don't have to.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
No. Anybody else? Worked anything, or anybody got anything they want to comment on? You got any new business here this morning? Brian?
Huh?
Andrew? Anyway, can't do that. I just said business-wise before we got going that way. Okay, if not, we're ready to, HR. Have you guys looked that over, the new HR policy?
Personnel policy?
Personnel policy.
Correct, personnel policy, yes.
Changing companies? Yep. This is what the recommendation is of personnel, right?
Yep, right, Ryan, you're on that.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, Kathy and Christine did a good job with that. Sounds like a pretty good company and a lot of.
What was it, eight thousand dollars?
Eight thousand, and then, yes, another. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for new focus for eight thousand dollars for our new personnel policy.
Okay, motion made and seconded for accepting our new personnel policy, eight thousand dollars of new focus. Okay, any questions, thoughts? If not, all in favor?
Just for clarification, that's to revise the current policy on that eight thousand dollars. Otherwise, the, the, the HR, routine HR questions, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, and then there's a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar a year subscription fee for annual updates on the federal and state.
Okay.
I think it's going to be good.
So, motion made, seconded, and vote was three oh two accept, so. Make sure we get every place here. We need to get signatures. Maybe a moment here to. Okay, next spending agreement for the American Legion. They've got a request in here. They have a twenty-five hundred dollars purchase of flags, put on the veterans' grays. Any comments on that, Steve?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion made.
I'll second it.
Okay. No other discussion? All in favor?
Trying to figure out where to sign this thing at. It kind of confused it. Just right there.
That's why I had to look into it two or three times to figure out.
Where's the other one?
On the next page.
Oh, okay.
It's turned over.
Okay, we've got we got grant for courts for community corrections. Got a two thousand, twenty-six grant application for community corrections. They just need our approval for this. We've done this each year, so. Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Community corrections. And then we have a request for a laptop. Megan Hilberg, she needs this as for certified training officer course from May twelfth through May sixteenth.
That's for supervisor training.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. I see this just takes my signature on this and make it. Okay. All right. Travel authorizations. You guys seen all of those?
Yep.
Good with them?
Yeah.
We'll leave those here when we sign them here after that.
We did have a conversation about those.
We do?
Yeah. Not that, not that staff, just a conversation in general.
Travel requests.
Clarification.
Travel request on day meetings because this is getting way out of hand on what's getting turned in every five minutes. In fact, there's one that got turned in that's laying there. The meeting happened three weeks ago, and you're just now approving the request. The meeting happened three weeks ago, and you're just now approving the request.
So, we're needing, make it that they have them in advance.
Well, to me, the travel authorization needs to be, if they're going to be traveling out of the county more than one day, I can see requesting what the hotel bill is, what the mileage is, what everything is. These day meetings, when they're just going to a day meeting, and they're gone and back in the same day...
And we're paying mileage, and that's it?
And you're, yeah, they're paying mileage. Well, there are some that are requesting to perempt, but that will be addressed in the new policy. I don't think they need to be filling these out for a day meeting. Otherwise, we're gonna, I mean, I've got a stack in my desk like that for day meetings.
I filled one out for that, because I had a day meeting in Kokomo January 31st. Truthfully, I forgot about doing the mileage thing, so mine is behind time, but that's...
No, it's, yours isn't the one I'm referring to, there was another one that was...
Oh.
Not, not yours.
Okay, okay.
I did see yours the other day, but that's not, that's not the one I'm referring to.
And I was told before, before you became in office, that for day meetings, we didn't have to fill out a travel voucher. So, that's why we...
Well, that's what it was originally, and then all of a sudden, it got changed, I don't know how it got changed, and now I'm getting bombarded with day meeting requests just because of mileage, and it's like...
Because I didn't fill one out at first, and then Chantel contacted me and said I had to fill it out, and I thought, well, I was told before, if it was, you didn't stay overnight, you didn't have to fill one out.
Exactly, that's what the original intent of travel authorization was for, was for overnight travel, but now it's got...
I agree with you, just to travel during the day, they're kind of a pain to figure out, and if you're gonna spend the night, we're gonna have motel bills and that, we oughta see them, but you guys tell me what you think.
And we don't have mileage, it's over fifty mile, or unless it's over fifty mile, right?
You gotta have mileage of whether it's ten miles, you're gonna have mileage, they can judge mileage anytime they have to use their vehicle for business use, so whether it's ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever it is.
Okay. So...
So, we are in agreeance on that, then, we're just gonna...
Yeah, just overnight travel, otherwise...
I'll send them an email after this, and...
Okay.
Let me know.
All right. All right, we got transfer requests. Here we got, clerk's office continuing to, per day of mileage, two thousand, a thousand dollars each way. And, did you guys, did you look these over? Are we good with them?
Yep.
And then we got another one from SWCD, from Public Stich Maintenance, dues continuing ed, building rent to contractual services for eight thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars, hook going each way. All right, I got claims, we got a pretty good stack of claims here.
And just to let you guys know, too, that you're gonna start seeing a lot of transfer requests, 'cause we've got line items already going red, and I have no control over that, that is the previous, but it's the budget and a previous group that did that, so just be prepared, you're gonna see a lot of...
That's because they left some line items out of their budget, is that what it is?
Well, there was money that was moved, well, like the clerks, the continuing ed, continuing ed and mileage got moved out of our clerk's budget and put into the twelve seventeen fund, which is a leftover fish, that was done to every budget.
A lot of them.
Yeah, so, we're, I foresee a lot of transfers and additional corporations and sheriffs, so be prepared.
Okay. All right. Claims wise, you guys had a chance to look these all over?
Yep.
Any problems or questions?
There was one claim that was just out of this morning, because I thought it had been paid, and it was not paid, so I had Chantel do a quick claim this morning, it was for AIC legislative conference travel.
Okay. All right. So, this is AIC legislative travels, a hundred and thirty-five dollars. There's public defender, twenty thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-six Credit card as of on two thirteen would be for twelve thousand two hundred five dollars and eighty-six cents.
Wow, that's a big one.
And we have a couple of big ones in our own. Fair amount of those, I know were, I think it was IT equipment and stuff that we had for upgrading.
Yeah, that IT guy, you know, he...
And uses our money.
Credit seller, who's buying equipment.
Yep. You're excited.
Yeah.
I have an opportunity to speak with you guys, I'll fill you guys in, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, we'll get you out of your new or old business.
Yeah. Miss Lay's claims as of today, four hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Utilities for forty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Wheel and Surtax, forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-five Tourism, or, okay, tourism commission, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, we got payroll deduction, or payroll, three hundred and two thousand four forty-four dollars and fourteen cents with deductions of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Disbursements from one sixteen to one twenty-two, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. We got disbursements from one twenty-three to one twenty-nine for ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. We got disbursements from one thirty to two oh five, forty-six hundred dollars, forty-six hundred and one dollar. We got February fees, for sixty thousand five hundred twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. And then it takes care of the claims.
Did we have some minutes?
Yeah. We got minutes here, Kathy?
You did, but I forgot to print them out.
I thought we looked at them.
We looked at them online, I know we saw them there.
Okay, we can go ahead and approve them in a minute.
Will you run down real quick? Tell Shailen to print them. Yeah.
Okay, we'll get them in a minute.
We'll get them, sorry about that. Too many, too many meetings, too many things going on.
You're good. I had ten attachments for this meeting, made a bunch of them.
I had all the attachments to you, guys, I just forgot to print one of them out.
We saw them. Okay.
Justin's one to talk, why don't we get him?
Yeah.
I won't take up too much time, I know you're pretty much all the way through, give me one second here, I'll move. Okay. Heading to your hair. Okay, so, kinda wanna inform you guys, and I'm sure you've already heard a little bit from Kathy, and I know two of you were present out of the three when we were going over things Friday, trying to get things worked out. We're about ninety percent there with this room. We have the camera tracking set up, so right now, when we look back at the recording, Dave, you were just done talking, the picture would've been on you now that I started talking within about five to ten seconds of that, and Kathy's shaking her head, I think she's viewing it right now, the camera should be right on me. We did find out over the weekend, we have, we have a major server upgrade going on today, it's gonna last until about ten PM this evening, I sent out an email the other day to notify everybody. Nobody should really notice any issues with it, except for Christina Haas's payroll, that's why I had to bump out, she had an issue with financial server, but we got that rectified, that's back up and running. But, no, long story short, we're about ninety percent there, we still have to get the issue with the monopad worked out, now that we've kinda changed some things around with the cameras, the monopad is not displaying accurately like it should, we're gonna get that worked out, and then the other thing is, we've moved the camera, that was originally over your head, Rick, we've moved it to focus on the three of you, or the council, or the boards, that camera will be moving back, but we're looking at the possibility of getting a more accurate camera to sit there and zoom on you. There was some misunderstanding as far as the focus where it should be, the more we talked about it, the more we realized that they seemed to think that the focus wanted to be on the audience as well, and yes, we do want it to be on the audience at certain points in time, in time, should somebody stand up and start speaking, or be sitting and speaking, it will be able to focus on that, but as of right now, the audience is really not part of that group unless one of these two cameras should focus on it, but that's not the case right now. That will be fixed, I'm gonna be talking with them today to see what their, their schedule is, and when they hope to have everything done. But today, Kathy's doing the test run, we're gonna go back and review, we're gonna look for the cameras themselves, as far as how they're handling the motion and the positions of the speakers, and then to the actual audio, the clarity of the audio with myself speaking, the three of you speaking, so, we will review that this afternoon, and then we will get back to you all and let you know how that went. I think we're gonna actually send the video over to Kathy, too, and if you guys would like, we could send the video over to three of you also. The upgrade today, like I mentioned, it started at eight o'clock, we have ten physical servers, five here, five over at the sheriff's building, those are getting upgraded today to the latest version of VMware. In the past, it was a pretty straightforward, simple upgrade that we can sit there and stage and do pretty quickly, with our new VX rail system, it's a very lengthy process, and not only pushes the latest update from VMware, but it pushes the latest updates from Dell for the servers and all that good stuff. So, each host takes about two hours to two and a half hours to sit there and go through the process. Once host A, or host number one, is done, then it moves on to two, then it moves on to three. So, right now, it's in the process of the annex building, hence where Haas's issue came, and that was just a freak glitch, we shouldn't have any more of that today, at least I hope not. On the ninth of next week, we have a spill-in upgrade, this is not like the upgrade for the actual spill-in software, this is more of a server move. We're trying to be proactive, we have still a lot of servers that are on Windows Server 2016, we have a Server 2022 data center license with the appropriate client licenses, we are moving all of our vendors over to 2022, so we can be proactive instead of waiting until the last moment to sit there and make that move, that way we're ahead of the game. We're going to start with spill-in next week, they're going to move, move their software. The other thing that we're working on in the IT department is Okta, we've been talking with Okta, they're an identity management company, they handle multi-factor and single sign-on. Some of you may be extremely excited about this, it gives you the ability to sit there and have a single password, which would be your Windows password, if you can remember that one, and then after that, a lot of our applications that we utilize within the county then will also utilize that, so it's basically one password, single sign-on, once you're signing your computer, you can sit there and you can use that same information to sign on to certain apps. It would be extremely helpful with Odyssey over in the courts, our email system, because one of the things that we've been concerned about is we, we want to have sometime late summer, we want to have a particular group come on site, do an audit of our security posture, and make sure we're where we need to be. That way, after we're all said and done, and if they make some recommendations, then we do another test, so to speak, and if we pass, we can hand that information over to the insurance company as well, so they have it on. We're also going to sit there and get EMA involved, because I know that EMA handles a lot of the disaster, cybersecurity disaster recovery situations, that will also involve sheriff, also involve 911, get everybody involved, so we know what our security posture looks like, and should an event take place, what everybody's role is. So, we wanna get that in line, that way, we don't have to say, oh, we didn't know about it, we know about it. Some of the other servers, like I mentioned, we've talked with Lau, we've talked with Fidler, we've talked with Exoft and the assessor's office, all of them are aware that we already have these servers built out and ready for them. Lau is very much on board, ready to move, and I think, WTH, I don't think there was a cost involved whatsoever, and I don't think with Lau, if I remember correctly, I know, I do remember correctly, Lau had mentioned, if there is any cost involved, it's already in the auditor's fund to take care of that and manage that. So, there shouldn't be a lot of cost involved, and like I said, it gets us ahead of the The other thing that we've been working on kinda falls back in place with our security posture, we have various backup mechanisms in place that are doing their job, one of the things that we're trying to do now is we've talked with a couple of agencies, outside agencies, that are experts in the security realm. You all three know that one of the things that we run into is, when we go end of life with a particular piece of hardware, they no longer push out operating environment updates, things for security. We had asked, we have three storage arrays that were extremely expensive, they're end of life, two out of the three will be end of life, one is already end of life, two out of three will be end of life, this summer. One of the things we asked is, can we make this particular setup, an immutable setup, to where we replicate over to it, should we have an event, a disaster event, it's segregated from the rest of the group, we can fire that up immediately and have ourselves back up and running without any type of worry about writing over the data, anything along those lines. It's basically immutable, it's encrypted, everything's locked, and they said, yes, that would be fine, as long as this is used in an emergency situation, there would be no issue with that, because you're not, you're not relying upon that as your day-to-day production environment, it's in a case of emergency, that gives you time to run off of that, and then get your original backup running. So, that is one of the things that we're working on, and it makes us feel good, because we're utilizing something that we paid a lot of money for in the past, and it's still relevant, and we can utilize it. With our agreement that we have currently with the city police department, Matt Campbell and I talked about the possibility down the road of putting some systems over on their end to sit there and keep everything off-site from us, since we're always sharing that connection, if they have the ability, we have the ability down the road to bolster that connection that we have currently through RTC, get more throughput bandwidth on that connection, that would definitely be a possibility, and it would benefit all of us, because right now, we have multiple points of backup, we have cloud backup, we have removable hard drive backups that are in an auto loader, it's not just a simple USB drive that we plug in, and then we have multiple backup locations. So, we're just, how redundant you wanna be, I don't know, but we have the ability, so we're kinda gonna move that way and get that immutable storage in place, so, that's kinda what we're working on right now, just a, just a heads up. The other thing, too, I don't know if John mentioned, the final camera at the highway department was put up on the pole, which is really interesting, it goes to show you just how far that software has come, literally tracks individuals, just like it doesn't hear through voice, but this one literally tracks individuals. Is there those, if there's no one in the parking lot at the highway department, correct me if I'm wrong, John, 'cause you've watched it way more than I have, you're like a beaming tongue. If, if there's no one in the lot, and somebody's actually walking down the road, that camera, if I'm correct, will sit there and watch that individual, and as it gets closer, it will zoom in, it's kinda scary, but pretty impressive nonetheless. So, that camera is, the only thing we have left out there to do is get the access point in the garage done, and I think internally, we've got the guys in the side shop good to go. Yeah. So, that's basically where we're at.
That's on Amazon, man.
Oh, yes, good call, I forgot completely about that. All right, so the other thing, Kathy, myself, and some others, I think probably even the three of you probably got an email from an individual, Scott, from Amazon, he is now the state of Indiana's rep, and he's coincides with AIC. AIC has a new program through Amazon that gives all the local counties the ability to sit there and purchase certain items at a twenty-four, twenty-five percent discount. One of the problems that we've had for the last, I think it was 2022, so for the last three years, back in 2022, Superior Court ordered toner cartridges, those toner cartridges were attempted to be delivered here at this location, so Devon and I could take it over to Superior Court. We looked at the tracking, the tracking for FedEx clearly stated that it was not delivered, it was brought back to the center of Kokomo. They attempted another delivery, both deliveries were done after four o'clock, so right there, we knew it wasn't delivered. Went back to the hub again, then it was finally sent back to the third-party seller. We argued with Amazon that that particular package was not delivered. Amazon, of course, there was a language barrier, we weren't dealing with, with individuals on US soil that was outside of that, we explained to them, you know, the best of our abilities, hey, this was not delivered, we have the tracking information, they, of course, contacted the third-party seller, the third-party seller said, no, it was never sent. Argument was, it clearly... Our argument was, it clearly states on FedEx's tracking report, it was sent back to the seller. They wouldn't move on that. And the problem was, at the time, we had net terms. We had net terms 30. We could sit there and we could do all of our purchasing under a net terms account, which was great. We didn't have to use a credit card. Then Amazon stated the fact, well, we're not going to sit there and reimburse you. You need to pay this. Our remark was, we can't pay for something that we didn't receive. It's not going to work that way. We can't in front of state board accounts. Should they do an audit, they're going to sit there and wonder why in the heck we'd pay for something that we don't have in our hands. So this went on for multiple years where we argued. Finally got a rep here. The rep took a look at it Friday. We had a web conference, and he immediately said, yeah, we're going to get that taken care of. We'll get that removed. We'll put you on a net 45, which Kathy improved, and I think, Rick, you had heard as well. So here in the next week or two, we should have net terms back. And then he's going to get the entire county under an umbrella, where Kathy has oversight in her department to see everything that's purchased. Should they have to pull an invoice? They have the ability to pull an invoice if a department head doesn't send it to her. And then she can see what the expenditures are coming from each department, along with the three of you, if you want that. So, we as a group, I think we're going to sit down. I don't remember what the date was. I think it was the last week of March, maybe?
Last week of March.
Yeah. So if any of you want to attend, let me know. I'll send the invite out.
On the items they had now, most of the items, is the way you put it, will be at a pretty good discount, a 20% or so percent discount.
Yeah, I think, if I remember correctly, the two of you can remind me. I think they had mentioned office supplies, was it a deep discount, a 25%? And then I think computer peripherals were also some of those items, like mice, keyboards, things like that. I was really excited, because I thought it might be something a little bit more than that for our department, but I don't think that's going to be the case. We'll see. But regardless, it's a win-win, and it gives us an opportunity to sit there, especially with paper products, whether it be, you know, legal size or standard, eight and a half by 11. Gives us an opportunity. If we can buy in bulk, we can buy in bulk and get a lot of the stuff shipped. I know the highway department has contacted us numerous times to sit there and put in bulk orders for paper for their group. So if we can get bulk orders in across the board, at the end of the year, for example, and just say, hey, Superior Court, hey, auditor, whoever, we'd like to purchase.
The more you use, if we get everybody on board and start using it, you're going to get a bigger deal.
And I would say it's probably going to, and I don't want to speak for Scott on the Amazon side, but I know on our end too, it really depends on volume. So a lot of times, we already have a predetermined discount. But if we're buying more than what we typically would, we can even get a better discount than that. So it's worth a shot.
I know they laid that out down at the AIC conference.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just excited finally now, as much as we purchase from Amazon, that we have a local rep that will hear our voice, because it was very disturbing to us. We were kind of the redheaded stepchildren, Devin and I, because we knew the reason why we didn't have net terms all these years was because of that order, but we can't pay for something that we didn't receive, so.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you, guys.
You bet. Did I have five minutes?
Minutes, you got. You just overlooked them.
I did, didn't I? They were right there. Must have slid underneath the.
They were underneath the travel.
That's right. Okay. Got the copy of the minutes here. Any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion made in second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Carries three of them. That's a lot of items there. I think we got everything on the checklist down to old business.
No, old, no.
Okay. Any old business from out here?
I just have one thing. The warming center changed the Church of Nazarene, which is on Southway 31. Same times, same process, just different church.
Does the warming center quit, like, at a certain date?
I don't know. I think so. I think it will go through.
It could take the churro.
I reminded you those are the weekend that this is the last one.
Okay. So at the end of March, it.
Yeah. Unless they probably need to revisit it, but I was thinking March also. But yeah, the Church of the Nazarene, I don't know the address, but it's just, just south on Southway.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Any other? New business?
Yes, I'll bring up, it was last Friday, me and Kathy and I don't know who else was there, but anyhow, went to the city, what do they call it, the redevelopment commission board or whatever. But the big deal was, they had a TIF thing on it. After the meeting, I had a couple of people come out and say, well, you know, does the county do any redevelopment? And I said, well, we got a committee, but, you know, no, no big board like that. And, so, but anyhow, I got talking to Trent, and Trent advised to me, because I thought, well, maybe we should see about expanding ours a little bit, doing something like that. Trent's suggestion, and I wish he would have stuck around so he could pop in on it. I think he talked to Dave about it too. He'd make it bigger, bring some other people into it, if that's what we wanted. You know, I wouldn't mind seeing Akron in Kiwanah, and of course, a council representative and a commissioner representative, but I think Brian goes to most of them. But, on there, but his feeling was, that way you're not getting too, everybody knows what everybody else is doing. So, so just a thought, he was going to, you know, look, get some names around and see who all he would like to have, might enter, to be thought that was a good idea.
Your current resolution is a five-member board. But there's not five members on that current.
And it was set up in '06, and there's nothing, no changes have really been made since.
Well, we don't have any money to do anything, so I don't really, I see that, I think it's a waste of time to have a big board come in, especially when the city's going to annex it. So it depends on what we're going to do there. We have four meetings a year, and they're just formalities, because until, I think right now, that I think we're probably in the black now. The boys have been short, yeah, because of the bond. And so we, I mean, basically, it's, you know, I mean, there's nothing to talk about. There's no, so I just think it'd be a waste of everybody's time.
Well, I see it, I see it as everybody knows what's going on. I get asked a lot, you know, if I see Rebecca from Akron, well, what's going on in Rochester? I have no idea what's going. It kind of ties everybody together, so they know if, you know, this business is looking at this, or, well, maybe this business don't work here, but it work in Akron a little bit, or something. Tying the cities all together, not making ours big. Trent's recommendation was just making his board.
Oh, his.
But ours, ours merged into his.
Yeah, ours.
Then we have the county, city.
Merged into his.
Well, that's, I know, you and I talked to Jason similar down at the commissioners' conferences, so that'd be a discussion to have, if we're going to merge that to keep the tax base where it currently is, because if the city annexes it, then we lose, we're going to lose a little bit of revenue if the city takes it from today.
And I did bring that up. Kathy jumped in here. Paige, not what Paige, what's, what's her, well. Heidi said she was going to talk to Jason about that. So, and they weren't going to do the TIF. Now, I thought they could do the TIF at any time. I didn't think they had to wait until the bond paid off, but they said they was waiting until the bond got paid off before they do the TIF, is the way they put it. So she had a little time. But she's checking in on, Heidi's supposed to talk to Jason about what makes the most sense.
Yeah. Or may not need enough money there to keep them together. And we just started, you know, so there's not much out there yet.
But, you know, what me and Trent talked about, well, that just keeps everybody all on the same page. I know most of it's happening in Rochester, south of town, outside the county. You know what I'm saying? But it still, it lets everybody know what's going on in their county, and so.
The Kiwanah's commission, and what Akron will know that it wants, if they have representation on it, they know what's going on.
So, so if he sends us over or whatever, we'll look at that. Or I just wanted to give you guys your thoughts.
Yeah, if he's wanting to expand his, I can't see that. I can't see ours.
No, that's what his thoughts was. He thought it'd be better just to expand his.
Yeah, we don't have enough, we don't have, there's no money to do anything, so.
Back to public reform, talk to Trent.
I was going to say, for the three of you, keep in mind too, and I know this has been a longstanding project here, that I know the city of Rochester, and then the sheriff's department as well, is looking at doing the same thing on a smaller scale as to what we're doing in this room here. The ability down the road too, to have Zoom meetings and have those Zoom meetings made public to the website, and also get stored internally, is there also down the road between all entities. So that's something to keep in mind with other meetings down the road too, that the concern of, oh, we need to get everybody here, or we need to get everybody there, as long as everybody's correlating and in doing either, like, through a Zoom meeting or a Teams meeting or something like that, it's still made public. We still have the ability to make it public in real time.
That's all I had.
Okay. Brian? Anybody else out here? Any business to be brought to the commission? If not?
I do.
Oh, you do?
You didn't ask me.
Got to ask her, Dave.
I went around.
You didn't ask me. You asked that.
Okay. Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Yeah. You guys kind of got the rap last week about it. So, we need to have a discussion about county credit cards. And I did make one department head, they had to come pay because they couldn't produce the receipts. If you're going to use those credit cards, you need to turn those receipts in. Please do not wait till the last day to do it, because that's what this person did. They waited, and they couldn't find the receipt. And I'm just as guilty, because I couldn't find one of my receipts, and I was about ready to write a check to the county to pay for something I had done. But, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm above everybody else. Like I said, I almost wrote a check Friday, because I couldn't find my receipt. I did find it, so, but it's, it's getting to be an issue, and a really bad issue with the credit cards. And we've got way too many credit cards floating around out there as it is. In talking to some other counties, their auditor's office keeps those credit cards in their possession. They have to come get it to be able to use it. We're one of few counties that actually lets people have those credit cards.
I think they used to though. I think they used to keep them.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to babysit.
How many credit cards do we got? Do we got it?
Uh, I would say 30 plus. You guys, that's what I'm saying. We've got way too many credit cards out there. I don't have time to babysit everybody. I should not have to babysit people.
I thought the original plan was to have the office have, you have a credit card, and if your employee needs to get it, get it or use their credit card, then you.
I think that's, I think that's the way it started out, but now, all of a sudden, it's gone that the entire sheriff's department's got a credit card, and, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I'm just asking that you got credit cards, don't wait till the last day the claims are due to turn those receipts in, because you're going to find yourself hunting down invoices, looking for receipts to turn in with that card. And if you don't have that, you're going to be writing a check, or you're going to be paying cash in the treasurer's office to cover that invoice, because I'm not going to wait for you. I can't wait for you to find that invoice, because that card, that bill has to be paid, and it has to be paid on time, or they're going to shut it off. But if it comes down to it, I don't have a problem going in and shutting off credit cards myself. So, I don't want to do that, but I don't want to play chase the invoice either. I don't have time to play chase the invoice. I would like to send out an email this afternoon with your blood stain that, hey, look, here's the issue. You need to turn your invoices in. When you, when you use that card, turn that invoice in that day. You can hold claims. Sean Tal can hold the claim, but I'd rather you have it turned in, and we're not chasing invoices. Otherwise, you will be responsible to pay for.
Do we need to go back to the policy of department head only?
That's a conversation you all need to have.
I know we keep ours in our desk, put away. We don't carry it on our person. The other thing too, is Kathy, I don't know, do you suppose that with the new Lao system that we're looking at, will that simplify things as far as if claims would get some of these credit card invoices or receipts ahead of time?
I'm hoping, because when we, and we're just, we're just starting to work on that. We're just starting a few offices at a time, till we can get everybody on board. But I'm hoping that, yes, that will, because they can upload that invoice attachment into the claims and that, and they can leave it in the pending process until they shoot it over for approval. So I'm hoping this will alleviate it, but until we get that fully operational.
Well, I know a lot of us have been in a pinch too in the past. I remember that we had purchased something for the sheriff's department at one point in time with tax exempt status from Walmart here locally. And then somewhere down the line, our receipt from Walmart was misplaced, so we had to call them up. Almost all these companies are willing to work with you, as far as you can give them some type of transaction date. They can typically, nine times out of 10, always bring it up. So, really, there's not necessarily a big, it shouldn't be an excuse not to produce.
No, there's not. They can go back and do it, because there was another office that had that same issue, but they went back and made a phone call and got what they needed. It's, it goes back on the card holder slash department head.
We've had this conversation for a couple of years, and I think, you know, I think we need to look at it. I know that, you know, if you're in charge of someone, your own credit card, you're going to produce that receipt to get reimbursed, you know. And I know the biggest obstacle we've had is the sheriff's department with the travel that they do, and if the fuel pumps are down soon. I know we've tried to look into fuel cards for them. So if we could get the fuel card thing figured out, that would help them. And then I think the credit card thing can be reined in a lot.
I think so too.
You know, and I think it would help us out a lot, so, you know, we need to look at it.
I'm not, I, by no means I'm saying that sheriff's department is the issue. There.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's what the only one.
It's just, it's a joke.
That's the reason why they got the credit.
That's why they have oil.
Yeah, that's why they have oil.
Fuel issues, if it's down or something, or if they're, they're out and about, they need fuel, they can't. But that's why they have. It makes sense. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying, it would, the fuel card, and I know Sean Tal was looking into that, so.
We looked into it. I'll have to go back and look about the fleet, fleet card thing.
There are fleet cards we can get that use locally and wherever, so.
I just don't want to have to go that route that we say, well, this is the issue. We're doing away with them, and you go back to reimbursement, because then that's the bigger nightmare of dealing with reimbursing.
Okay. All right. It sounds like it's an issue. We need to take it under advisement. Okay. Any others? Anybody got any thoughts on that? All right. Okay, anything else? Kathy, anything else on your business? I want to make sure I get you included in this.
Okay.
Look for motion here.
So, lift.
So, motion made in second for German, all in favor?
Oops.
Oh, Steve?
I was also at public count.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Just on the behalf of the Rochester Legion, Kiwanah, Rochester BMWs, I'd like to thank the commissioners, the council, also the mayor and the city council, they gave us a good check, prostitution, their meeting, all the senator, residents of whole county for all the money for the flags. Helps a bunch, and went up quite a good once, a couple of years.
Thank you for putting them out and doing what you.
They look good.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, now we're done?
Now we're done. Anybody else? Josh, you needing something?
No, no.
Okay.
We're talking about camera movement.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if I got to release us or not, but I'll make the motion again.
Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion made in German.